I will call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order at 7 o'clock PM on Monday, May 1st, 2023. And before we go into the Pledge of Allegiance, just a rule call in case anyone does know where. Roland, start with you.
Hi.
I'm Roland.
Hey, see, I think I'm voting already.
He really wants the meeting to be quick tonight.
Yeah, Roland Berry.
Richard Bremmels.
Andrew Alward.
Jennifer Gill.
Peter Caruso, Town Administrator.
Matthew Mealy.
Okay, and now we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so New Business, so consideration candidates for appointment through 6:30 2024 of Council on Aging. I see all the candidates are here, which is great. So, and we have reviewed this, and I've reviewed my information many, many, many times. So how does the board want to handle this? Do we just want to have the three of them come up and ask some questions? Or one at a time? I don't anticipate any kind of issues with doing it all at once, but if we want to do it one at a time.
Yeah, we can do it all at once, I think.
Okay. All right, so Cecil Gomes, Richard Hurtel, Jeff Pettit, if you want to come up here, we can get you another chair.
Oh, yeah, you're coming too.
Thank you, Peter. That's right. That way it's less scary for everybody.
Highly contested seat here, huh?
It's a very powerful position.
Wow.
So people are all very interested.
I'm getting nervous this for everybody.
Um, so I'll just go this way. So Jeff, if you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to be considered.
Sure. I live on Chestnut Hill Road, 442. Been here for 13 years. And I've been, I've been on the different councils in town here, and I kind of decided that, you know, there's an opening for the Council on Aging, and majority of our population is seniors. So I have extra time, and I have a lot of knowledge, and figured I could help them out. They had a meeting, so I went to it.
She's okay. My name is Cecil Gomes, and I live on 93 Kempton, and I've been here most of my life. And yes, I wanted to help out as much as I could with the seniors, because I am one. And, but at the time that I put the application in, I wasn't having medical issues, and I am now. And so I felt it was better for me to step back.
Okay.
And let somebody else that can put the time in where I couldn't.
Okay.
So, but I would like to, if there is another opening along the way, and my health improves, and, you know, issues like that go away, then I would be like, I would like to be considered, you know, to help out with the seniors.
Okay, great. And Richard, who are you?
Yeah, Richard Hurtel, live at 8 Rondin Road. I've lived in the town of Millville for over 40 years. I've been on various boards, the planning board for over 30 years, capital planning, trustees for the part. And I've been involved with the seniors. I'm president currently, and I was president in the past. But I stepped down as president when they had closed the club during COVID. Now I'm back in because there was talk of them terminating the senior clubs. So I stepped back in because there's some good people here in town that I would hate to see the club disbanded because of that. I thought I'd join the COA only because I was on the COA in the past. And I've got a lot of knowledge on the current laws, and I think I can do a lot of good for the seniors.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for anyone?
Well, I know last week, we were concerned about, you know, doing maintenance and things of that nature in the, in the senior center. And just being in construction myself, I know that you can't, especially a town building, and really any, any public or private building, you can't do any type of work unless you are personally, or if your company is insured and licensed to do so. That's against the Mass General laws, and it's all, it is in the electrical code and building code that, and I'm assuming plumbing too, I don't know the plumbing code, but that you need all these certificates of insurance and licenses to do that. So that's one thing that needs to be kept in mind. It's great if somebody wants to help. We will accept any donation of labor and/or material for, for a specific town entity. But at the same time, they do need to be licensed and insured.
The garagekeeper's policy, I think? That's what you're referring to?
Yep, and, yep. And, so.
I wonder what the cost of that would be. I know we're self-insured here, but I wonder if there's a supplemental policy, or excessive policy we can grab.
I don't know that, but people are insured who are on committees and so forth, you know, for officers' liability and that sort of stuff. The only comment I would make is it's not like you're filling a position to have, be a worker bee.
Right.
Banging nails, or, you know, whatever. You're looking for a leadership position. I think so.
Do you know if it's, if you can advise in that role without those licenses, instead of like specifically working on it? So like, if you're on the COA, and you're like just giving advice, or going out to look for those?
Well, you can make a recommendation that a door needs to be replaced because it's, you know, compromised, you know, structurally. You can't do the work. Somebody licensed and insured needs to be doing the work.
Just wanted to clarify.
Somebody that would hold the harm, the town harmless.
In, on your own property, you could pull a permit for building, electrical, not plumbing. And you can, you can do the work as long as you are the only people that live there. If it's a multifamily, you cannot. And then also the same with a commercial or public building.
So Jeff, do you have licenses and insurance, or one or just the other, or? Oh, thank you.
Um, I have a bunch of licenses. I'm not, I made it clear when I was in there, I was going to just try and help out, you know, anything that requires a license.
No, I just want to keep you, you from being liable. If you help, I, you know, I've been in the business for a little over 40 years. So if you help out and do something, and something happens, God forbid, right?
Yeah, yeah, liability.
The town will say, oh, that's all right, it was Jeff. Don't worry about it. The insurance company doesn't feel that way. They want blood all the time. And they'll go after you, and you can lose your house. So really, the insurance protects the, you, the tradesman, but it also protects the town or, or business or home, you know?
Well, I don't have insurance, but I've been certified mechanic. It first came up when I said I'll take a look at the senior van.
Yep.
You know, maybe save some money just on maintenance for that kind of stuff. And then we got into some of the septic stuff, and I don't have like, I don't know what they need for a septic license or anything, you know, but.
Right.
I don't want to do anything that's going to certainly cause any kind of liability or any kind of problems.
As, as far as like the senior van will say, changing oil and all that, and just routine PMI maintenance.
Yeah.
I would check just before you do touch it, that you do or don't need it. I would say the, the safety issues, like the brakes and stuff like this, you would certainly most likely have to have something.
Right.
To protect yourself, really, more than anything.
Yeah.
Because the insurance companies never lose. They go after any, anybody they can.
Yeah, yeah.
So, something to really think about.
Sure.
And I believe, Richard, you said you had insurance last week?
Yes, CC'd all the selectmen, including Peter. My construction superintendent's license unrestricted, but I've had.
Oh, it's in, it's in here.
Okay.
Yeah. I just want it to be on audio.
Roland just wanted to talk.
Nobody at home's going to read all this.
In case it gets spooked.
Not exciting.
Oh, you're right. But it's, it's, it's not easy to come by.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Oh, I've got all kinds of crazy insurance myself, so it's.
Could I just say one thing?
Of course, please.
I just find it nice that a young man is offering his services to come onto the council. I mean, I don't know either one. I don't, Richard, I know of you, but I don't know you personally. I have nothing against you, or I don't know Andrew Pettit either. But I've always, you know, I've been saying for a long time that, was it Andrew?
No, Jeff.
Jeff, I'm sorry.
Well, there's proof you don't know.
It's true, I don't know him. You know, we've said a long time, people are ages now. It's time for the younger ones to step forward. And to see that he's doing that, willing to come onto a board, you know, for the, for the seniors and, and help out and do what he can. I think it's wonderful. I wish more young, young people from the town would fill in these positions that are, that are empty.
Okay. Good. Yes?
I just wanted to say, I mean, with Jeff, we weren't looking for any free labor.
No, of course.
What, no, not at all.
No, it could be free or reduced rate, doesn't matter.
Well, we're going out for bids and things, when something needs to be done, or somebody tells us that something is wrong. We've got so many bills right now on fire suppression systems and so forth. Means nothing to us. We could get one, they could tell us it's going to cost $3,800, and this what's wrong. We have no idea. So we don't know where to go or what to do. I mean, we just want to compare. We want somebody with some knowledge. I mean, the knowledge would be wonderful for us. I don't know about you, Larry.
I don't know much about that.
I don't know either. But, I mean, just to take a look at the drawings to find out where the septic system cover was. That was great, because he uncovered it. A town, a town company came and took care of that for us at half price, and didn't cost us anymore, didn't have to come out there and bring his own shovels and so forth. I mean, that's, we're looking for knowledge. We're looking for a fresh approach to things that we might be able to do differently.
So, as I've said before in the past, it's, it's, the mechanical stuff is all well and good, but the main goal is the seniors.
Yeah, for sure.
Whether it's, whether it's in that building, or in, or under a tent in someone's backyard, we got to make sure the seniors are helped as needed, you know, in any way we can.
Okay. Any other questions? For you?
For me? No, no.
All right, looking for a nomination?
I would like to nominate Richard Hurtel.
Looking for a second?
Call second.
Any further discussion? Seeing now, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
I think before I vote, I, I want to be clear that the Council on Aging has recommended Jeff, right?
Yeah.
So I'm going to vote nay, because I want to go, I'm probably, I want to consider the, the Council on Aging.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do you want us to go back to discussion?
No, I think that's fair.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. Matthew?
Along the same ideas. Richard, I'm going to vote nay as well.
All right. Well, congratulations, Richard.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Jeff, thank you for putting your name forward.
Thank you very much.
Cecil, thank you for coming forward. Yes, Larry?
Would you clarify for us, going forward, when there's another vacancy, what the proper procedure is going to be? Because this got convoluted.
Yep.
In what we believe was the proper way to do it. So what is the procedure going forward?
Yep. So first, the resignation needs to be registered with the town clerk.
In writing?
In writing.
Signed.
It's signed. She prefers signed and, like, in person, but I know if there's someone has a health issue or something like that, they would prefer to, she can make exceptions, I guess, but the preference is a letter, that sign that's brought here. So once the vacancy is there, then we would expect some, you know, we make announcements in our meetings, like, hey, there's these open positions, so make an announcement so people can be well informed of the vacancy, and then take in applications, like, or, I mean, people, not applications, but, you know, send a note, hey, I'm interested, here are some of my qualifications, this is how I think I can help. Like, it should be pretty.
Like, nobody says that you can't hold their letters of, of intent right now for the next time.
But what I meant was, is it still going to need?
So you can.
An interview by the selectmen, the Board of Selectmen, again?
Yep.
Yep.
And that's in the bylaws of Millville, that the selectmen are the appointing.
Right, also in the bylaws in Millville is that all candidates come to the Council on Aging, and we make, we make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen.
Correct.
And once, and so we've done the process according to the bylaws. So are those changing?
No.
Yeah.
No. I mean, I'm.
We can make a recommendation, but you'll make.
In the previous nine years that I was a selectman, there was a lot of times that we were given candidates for, um, a police officer, a fireman, any of these other boards.
Right, paid, paid positions, absolutely.
And then after us going through more paperwork, then we would discuss with Chief Landry at the time, and end up being a different person.
I understand, but that's a paid position, and a paid position that is on the table.
Well, and it's all the same idea, though. It's still, you know?
Yes, Richard?
Clarify something. There was a lot of confusion about somebody who resigned from the post, that they have to submit a letter of resignation to the town clerk.
Yep.
And that, that's what caused a lot of confusion.
Yep.
That hopefully, you know, in the future, it's.
Yeah, so we.
So in the future, I would just not do any interviewing until the letter of resignation has been received and, and documented. Then once that happens.
Then there's an opening.
Then there's technically an opening.
Yes, exactly.
Can I just make a comment?
Otherwise, it's just hearsay.
Yes, of course.
I know, I'm, I just feel, as a citizen of the town of Millville, I feel it sad that the Council on Aging chose a candidate, and the Board of Selectmen is overriding that candidate. And I don't think that's fair. The Council on Aging's are the ones that are making the rules for their council. And they chose the gentleman they thought would be the best for their position. For the Board of Selectmen to over that, overrule their vote and nominate someone else as a citizen of the town of Millville, I think is terrible.
Okay. So I appreciate that feedback. I'll say, and, you know, Peter and I were meeting earlier, I didn't think we could really make a bad choice. I know Richard, I know Jeff. And I don't know you very well, Cecil, but I think that you would be a good candidate as well. So I was kind of looking to others, maybe, to make the recommendation. And then I did not think that there could be really a bad selection. So I understand your point of view, that they recommended someone, and it was, it was twice, I think, was pointed out last time, that they went through the process. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
I mean, one big thing I based my decision on is back, and I can't remember the exact year, around 15 or 16, when I, as a selectman, was part of the reason that, well, not the reason, but lack of funds was the reason, but, why the senior center had to close the building. You know, not the, you know, the senior center's always there, whether it's in a building or outside, like I said before. But, why the building had to close, and the, Richard, my wife, and some other folks got all got on the COA, and figured out a way to reopen that building without any funds from the town. So that is the track record that I'm going with, with Richard. No insult to, to any, any other candidate.
No, but you, you have to remember too, Paulette and Richard Muckier had a lot to do with why that hall is there.
Oh, I know, I know exactly why it's there. I, I did a lot of work in that building myself after it first opened.
It's not only one, one person that deserves credit for that. Paulette and Richard deserved a lot of credit.
No, they, they, they were a big part of getting it built.
Yes.
I'm talking about after, after it was built and open, and then had to be closed because of lack of funds.
There was a lot of, a lot of, not only the senior center, the library, everything.
Yeah.
It affected everything.
Everything. Trash, and you name it, it was affected. So, any non-essential, and I know seniors are essential, you know, the center, the library is essential for the kids, and, and some, some, anyone else that wants, you know, to use the center, all the stuff, everything in town is essential. But if you ask the state, not so much. You know, they, the, the management of the town is the essential funding that has to happen. Unfortunately, the lib, you know, if they were to take over, the first thing they do is close libraries, senior centers, and anything to that nature, because they're only looking for the dollar sign at the end. So, and, so I do remember that. My wife was a treasurer, and they, them and a whole bunch of other people all got together and reopened that building with, without any town money at all. And that was a great thing.
Right, so we're going to, yes, please, Andrew.
So I would like, I do appreciate your, your sentiment. Having been on the receiving end of two recommendations from boards, and having been put before the select board and being denied. So I do understand that, but there's a precedent that that has happened, happened to me twice already. So it's, it's not necessarily uncommon. Yeah. So it, it's, it sometimes happens that different committees have different opinions on who might be the better candidate. That's just how it happened this time.
Yeah, but what my, my thing was, is the Council on Aging, no.
Yep.
That's their board. I mean, they, they know their people, they know what they have to do, they know what their jobs are.
Well, one of those recommendations.
I know, but the Board of Selectmen, and, you know, I mean, I guess they can go anytime they want to any of the meetings, okay? But it's the Council on Aging that have to work together. And I just don't, I can't see overriding their opinion of who they wanted to work with.
Well, one of those, was the Council on Aging that I was tonight on. I was a member, and then I was up for a reappointment, and they said that they didn't.
I remember when you were on the Council on Aging.
Yeah, so it happens, and it was the same board, basically. So it happens a lot, so.
Okay. Well, thank you all for coming this evening. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
My toxik's not here, it's over there. Okay.
The next meeting.
Okay, so now we will move to New Business 3B, the annual town meeting, planning, and final review, selectmen recommendations of remaining articles.
Right, and I handed out, Jen, the draft, motions that will be done at town meeting. They're being reviewed by council, so the wording might change. But that helps you, guide you to also the warrant as well, because that's really, it's the motions that makes things happen.
Yeah.
Right?
Um, and we have, I'm going to kind of do these together. Also, the budget for the consideration, because I feel like we can't recommend the warrant, that warrant article without looking at the budget.
Yep. And so the budget, I handed out just the summary page, because I changed two numbers in the detailed budget that you've seen last week, and what was in your packets again. I, I, one of the numbers I changed was updated the correct number for the OPEB for BMR in the budget. The nu, the correct number for FY '24 is an $1,100 increase or thereabouts. So that's what's changed the bottom line. The other thing was I finally got the debt service for the Title V number. That doesn't change the bottom line, but it is a line item in the detail that people will vote on. The funding source is in the, identified in the motion of the, the omnibus budget to be coming from the Title V fund. So anyway, just, those are the two numbers changed in the details. I didn't give you the details, I just gave you the summary page.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so.
And I put names in what I handed out here for the motions, but those will be tweaked a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Spread it around better, but that's just sort of my first pass of.
Okay, so it looks like we have to do the recommendation on Article 10. And is that it? It might be it.
Yeah, I think so.
Did all the other recommendations?
The only thing you wanted to revisit, I think, the capital one, yes?
Yeah. Okay, yeah. Okay, so it's all.
Article seven?
Yep. So Article seven, just to go back to that one, we recommended it. But the capital stabilization fund is at $206-ish thousand dollars. And so we want to keep it at $200,000. That's a recommendation from the Capital Planning Committee. So it's a little slightly over. So we don't need to put any money in here. We recommended it. On others that we sought to take no action, we did not recommend them. So I don't know if we wanted to take a vote again, or, it, it doesn't really matter, I guess, at the end of the day, but for consistency, I thought we might want to consider taking another vote and not recommending it, since for the other articles where we're recommending no action, we also did not recommend those.
Okay, right. Makes sense.
Yeah, so to be consistent.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? All right, so, so how I'm going to do that then, is I will make a recommendation to recommend, and then if you don't want to recommend, you vote nay. If you do want to recommend, aye.
Okay.
Because I had confusion on that last time.
All right.
So I will make a motion to recommend Article seven, the capital stabilization fund. Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any further discussion? Seeing now, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Nay.
Richard?
Nay.
Andrew?
Nay.
Jennifer is nay. Matthew?
Nay.
Okay.
So I'll change that to 05.
Yeah, just since we're not taking any action on it. Okay. And then, so for the fiscal budget, recommend, article recommendations. So I don't know if anyone else had any other questions on the budget concerns?
See anywhere we can take, there's no more blood left in there to pull money out of, to, you know?
Yeah.
FinCom's having their public hearing Thursday night. I've posted for you all in case there's a quorum. So if you choose to show up.
Okay.
You know, there's a meeting posted, and you can call it to order if there's a quorum of you all.
May 8th.
So that, that, no, May 4th, that's the public hearing of FinCom, so Thursday night. And then the annual town meeting, yes, separately, you'll be posted. And whether you want to meet half hour early, and I posted half hour early, you know, you think about that.
Yeah. So anything else on the budget? So I don't recommend, I don't think we should make any other changes at this point, because we are a week away. But I did want to talk about, one of the articles we recommended or did not recommend was on stipends for the school committee. So the school committee and BBT are two that get stipends. Last year, Andrew and I voted no. And this woman came up, and she's like, hey, you know, you, you and Andrew voted no, and can you explain that to me? I said, look, I just don't think it's fair. They get stipends, nobody else gets stipends. And she's like, you know, I really wish you would have said that during the meeting. So I don't know if we should hold the, the line items and see, like, I, I'm open to holding them. I'm not going to take anything out, though, because I don't know that's going to pass. And I will say that if the school committee has to go back and recertify their budget, it's very, a very challenging process.
Yep.
So I don't expect anything to come of it, and maybe I'll chicken out at town meeting, we'll see. But that was, it's.
Because both schools are regionalized.
Yeah.
We get outvoted by Blackstone, and then.
Yeah.
Millville will get outvoted by 12 other towns. But we can make, make, make the, you know, maybe we could start a wave, but.
Yeah.
You know other towns will hear about it.
So, I, that was just, usually the school committee's like, if we have to do this again, it's really, it's very difficult. And then everyone's like, all right, we'll just leave it.
I'm willing to donate my selectman salary, if that helps.
At least half.
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
So I just, yeah.
But just to clarify, BVT is different than BMR in terms of the way the stipends are handled, right?
Right.
Millville has in its budget for BVT, the stipend of the representative. It's not like it would change the BVT budget if Millville stood against it. Versus the BMR one is captured in their, buried in their budget somewhere, right?
Yep.
And it would be very challenging to take it out.
We only own 23%.
Yeah, that's correct. So, that's right.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
We don't even own 25% of the budget, so it's hard to.
So then I won't hold those line items, but I'll just put it out there that if anyone did, I would support that. But it's just, it's kind of like, we're making things more difficult for us without a big payoff. Like, we are talking about maybe $5,000. It's not.
Right.
So, so I will not hold, I will not hold the line items in. I didn't even have to chicken out. I can just say that in this meeting. Okay. So then, for the, so then for the budget, I, I thought we did pretty well, to be honest. I mean, a deficit of $136,000 is not amazing. I was hoping that with our miniature surplus of $10,000. I was hoping that with our miniature surplus of ten thousand last year, we were making a wave to the, um, other, in the other direction. I don't know if you all have these sheets?
No, I didn't copy those, actually. Yeah, I should do that, yeah.
So, you wanna do that? So on that sheet, Peter just shows the, like, the state contribution to the school budget. So you can see their budget overall went up by like three percent, which is not terrible. But the contribution from the state went up one percent. And so now we're making up that difference.
Yep.
And I, um, Dr. Falcone said last meeting, that's, I, when he reminded me of those numbers, that reminded me as well that they want, we're at like a fifty point five percent contribution. They want us to be at fifty-nine percent eventually. So it looks like they're kind of slow rolling it, which is good, but in the meantime, I think we're gonna need to see some changes, like in terms of what we spend for the school. And even with those changes, we might still have a deficit, like even if we are like, you know what, you need to hold your line items. But with the changing school, the changing state contributions rather. So if you look here, it's in the second kind of block of numbers. So last year's contribution from the state was thirteen million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. And this year, the state contribution was thirteen million, nine hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars. So they gave us an increase of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars, which is one point four percent. And that's what's hurting us. If they kept it at the same rate, we might not have any deficit in our budget. So, okay.
That's Beacon Hill.
I know. I'm starting to wonder, why now? Why are they making this change now and what's, what's driving it?
Yeah. We don't have--
Different agendas.
One thing for sure is Massachusetts does not have a revenue problem.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Spending problem.
Yeah, like, so why don't they keep the funding level for the schools? The saint, you know what I mean? Like, what are we spending money on then, instead of schools?
It's not going to communities like Millville. It's, you know, it's going to the cities. That's where the, you know, a lot of the funding's going for schools. So you're, you're dealing with per student rates that don't really increase and don't track the increase of the costs.
Right, they, they may increase their budget of three hundred million for education this year. But we're one out of three hundred and sixty community, sixty something communities. And without population, it's a killer.
Yeah, okay.
I would say one thing, which is if we could make sure that we could stick to the three percent more closely. Because even though it's only three point seven percent, that's two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Which is more than our deficit. So if we could do that for all the departments, we wouldn't even be close to having a deficit. We'd have substantial surplus, so.
Well, I mean, I, I can go way back to police. They had the Quinn bill, right? Which was a hundred percent funded by the state. And then all of a sudden, one year, they said, all right, you still have to educate these officers, but we're not paying anymore. You know, that was the killer back then, in two thousand and ten, I think it was.
Unfunded mandate.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. So, and they did it not only with the police Quinn bill, it was other stuff. You know, lots of stuff, so.
Okay, so looking for a motion to recommend Article ten, the budget?
Second.
Need a--
I motion, yeah, I motion to, uh, accept Article ten, uh, FY twenty-four budget as, as presented.
Thank you, Roland. Looking for a second?
I'll second.
We beat you this time, yeah?
I was about to say that--
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Nay.
Jennifer is aye. Matthew?
Aye.
All right.
Okay.
We were having too many oh-fives and five-ohs. We're looking too agreeable, so--
You are a hundred percent right though, Andrew, with that point seven percent.
Yeah.
And, and by and large, the departments, it's not so much as a thing of if they need it, it's the fact if we have it. You know, if I'm making a budget for myself, if I don't have it, I just go without, you know? If I, you know, that means, you know, sometimes you have to eat crappier food or something like that. But you gotta make do with what you have and to be honest--
The Friday night pizza.
Yeah, and to be honest, with a town budget, it's the simplest budget to create in a sense because year after year, you have a pretty stable sense of what you're gonna make as a revenue source.
Yeah.
So it's not like we're surprised that our revenues went up or went up down or whatever. We, we know what it's gonna be before that, so.
Okay, great. Old business?
Really none at this stage.
I see nothing from departments?
Nope.
Public forum? We actually have an audience. Anyone public forum? No one wants to say anything? Okay. Um, announcements, Peter?
Just a reminder, Family Fun Day at BMR is May thirteenth, one to four P M. at the high school. I've seen it on Facebook. I just happen to have the flyer in my, and I'm sure it's on the school website, so.
Whatever would we do without the Facebook?
They have music, food, games and activities, so weather hopefully will be good.
Okay, um, so yeah, correspondence, so I wrote a letter to Dr. Fitzpatrick and I told him I would read it out loud to everyone just in the interest of transparency. So, and I sent this at nine fifty-seven A M. on Tuesday, so about eleven hours and forty-five minutes after our meeting ended. So it says, "Good morning, Dr. Fitzpatrick. I wanted to reach out again and apologize in writing in front of Jerry and Peter regarding our exchange last evening. I directed my displeasure toward you and it should have been to the chair of the school committee. I'll be sure to reach out to him for follow-up. I also CC you and Jerry on the email." And I did do that. I also wanted to say, there's a word, I, I also want to say that if there was a word I could take back, it would be untruthful. That is not the word I meant to say. I honestly don't know if there is a word to express what I wanted to say, but I can explain myself here. In the interest of a positive working relationship and collaboration, you and the chair should have followed up with Peter and myself to make sure that we were satisfied with the closing of the disciplinary process or at the very least informed of it. This is the minimum courtesy, in my opinion. In closing, as I have the information I was looking for, I now consider this matter closed. Thank you for attending our meeting this evening. I will also read this email aloud at the next Board of Select meeting on May first, twenty twenty-three, so everyone is aware of my apology and my more accurate sentiment. Best regards, Jennifer Gill. Said I would read it, so I did. Okay, we have no minutes, Peter?
We have no minutes. It'll be after town meeting.
Selectmen reports?
I have nothing.
Richard?
Nothing exciting.
Should we go over the money in, for the motions, for the accounts? I just thought of that. We wrote that down. I guess so--
Sure.
Just out, so for my select, sorry, Andrew, guys, skip over you?
No, I have nothing.
Okay, so I guess for my select report, I'll mention, so our free cash is like four hundred and thirteen thousand and change. So we're gonna put forty-six thousand, snow and ice, and you can see that in the motions. We're gonna put eighty thousand towards highway, um, and then we have a hundred and thirty-six thousand to the deficit. That leaves us with roughly a hundred and fifty thousand left over, right around that number. And that will go into our general stabilization, which will pour our general stabilization over one million dollars.
So the only question is whether you want to leave a little bit of free cash unused. So you, you, you're starting with the four thirteen or four hundred, right?
I started with four thirteen.
So I would go one thirty-five to the general stabilization and you're still over the million buck threshold, correct?
Yeah, and then that leaves a little extra, um, which they do recommend to leave, so you make sure you have free cash every year.
It's a cushion.
Yeah, it's just a cushion, make sure we have it, okay. Um, and then the other thing, so for the agenda for the next Board of Select meeting, I mean to do this every meeting and I don't, but I'm looking for input from all of you if anything else you want to add. So I thought we would talk about the survey that we sent out to residents. We did that a couple of years ago and that was well received, so I thought we should do it again. Master plan discussion, so I read it again and thought that we should maybe think, look at things we want to, um, you start acting on. Appointments, so I'd love to get our appointments done before July first. And then an eight, uh, annual town meeting recap, and then we'll have an executive session that Peter mentioned. Is there anything else anyone would like to add to the agenda? So just, you can let me know or Peter know if you don't have anything on the spot.
But just to set expectations, you're, you're unlikely to have appointments to make that night. Just an update of, you know, what typically happens is a, a letter will go out under my name to the people asking if they want to be reappointed. And then they mail them back in and that's your core of reappointments, plus you're seeking. So that, that meeting, you're also gonna identify where we have vacancies on committees and who might want to participate further.
So with that, that appointment list, um, that would include folks that are paid, right? Police, fire?
Correct, yes.
Philly inspector.
We get a, can we get a master list of that prior to voting on that, to review?
Yeah, so you'll get a list of appointments in your packets before the meeting, which will include, like, the chief will list, the, the police chief will list, the officers, he recommends you all appoint.
Gotcha.
The fire chief will provide who he's appointed, cause he's a strong chief, okay? You don't, you're not the appointing authority, right? And then separately, all the other groups, the status of whose returned forms back saying, I wanna sign up again, I'd like to be reappointed, or no, I'm not interested, so there's gonna be an additional vacancy, plus the vacancies.
So with the fire chief, uh, he's the appointing authority.
Yes.
Would we have an opportunity to express opinions on that prior to him making his final appointment?
I think you would do that separately with him, would be my recommendation.
Okay, I think you know where I'm going with that one, yeah?
Yeah, we don't, we don't do it in the meeting?
Uh, I, I think we could, yeah, uh, but I think to the extent you have concerns, I'd bring them up to him in advance.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't wanna--
Surprise him at the meeting.
Talk about that here.
Oh, I agree, yeah.
Cause you can't talk about people's performance, you know, things like that there.
Yeah, that's why I was asking if we would, we'd get that list in advance. Kind of where I was going with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
But there have been extensive communications with the chief.
Correct.
By yours truly, hers truly--
Yes.
In recent days, let's just say that.
Okay, that's fair.
For which you've not had an agenda item.
And I'm okay with that.
On this one or the bottom of the agenda, okay?
Okay. All right, so Matthew, anything for selectman reports? Okay, um, town administrator report?
I don't really have much. At this stage, I've been pretty tied up in all this stuff for town meeting. I did meet with the union last, police union last week, cause their contract's up for renewal starting July first. They presented me and we'll cover that in executive session on the fifteenth. You'll get in advance of that, uh, what they presented, plus my recommended counters. We'll meet and talk about that and I get your input. But under your bylaws, I, you know, I'm the negotiator, subject to your approval, but I always look for your input in that process. So I say, here's what I suggest doing. Do you have any concerns? And that's what we'll do in executive session. And so I'll just leave it at that. Uh, I'm taking a course for the procurement official thing, so I, yesterday I was taking the course and I passed two lessons and I put money in the custier, cause some of it's just gosh awful.
Thirty B.
But I'm just saying, so thirty B and then all the construction stuff is very complicated. So I'm, I'm halfway through the third course that you have to do and we'll have that done by the end of the month. And then I send in to certify me. So that process is taking place. Now, Old Town Hall, you know, we're just gonna start making a little bit more refined moves of the direction. And when I have a little bit more information on that, I'll come to you. I'm just letting you know that it's not a dead thing.
It's just moving slowly.
It's moving slowly, but maybe it'll start moving a little quicker.
Fair.
Um, I had one quick question. So for the monies to keep it in free cash, what would be the benefit for that?
The, the only thing is, you know, it carries over into free cash next year, so it's just, part of it is, it doesn't hurt you whether it's here in that here or there, other than its accessibility. But I just remember two years ago, when the assessor was coming forward for you to set the tax rate, there was an almost oops challenge of exceeding the, the levy limit or whatever the heck they deal with. So having had free cash available, which we didn't have at the time, would have allowed a little cushion in that situation. Not that it's, anything's done without knowledge of who needs to know, but I'm just saying that, uh, there was a stressor. But the stress was principally caused to an Araby, parties making the stuff, I guess, so. We were, we wound up okay, but had we not been without free cash that wasn't used, we would have had to have had a town meeting to fix the problem.
If it's when, when we were in the old building and, um, the boiler was like the demon sucking cash out of us constantly. And if we didn't have the free cash, we would have had town meetings every other month to, to fix the boiler, fix the-- So that, that's all. It's just readily accessible rather than going through it. But it can't be just spent at will.
And we're only talking ten or fifteen grand here anyway.
It's not a huge--
Yeah, thirteen thousand, and that's, um, Aubrey also would, I don't know if you remember this, but she would always talk about, when you do this, she would, she would put everything into accounts, but she would leave a cushion. She actually left quite a bit more. It was usually like thirty to forty thousand, just in case, because next year, say, something went over budget, then we have that. So then the free cash would be, like, next year would be like twenty-two thousand or whatever. So like Roland said, you have that money available. And I did read that in the Finance Committee handbook also, which is stimulating reading, um, that you should have some, like a, like something left. So, and they say, if you want to put everything into your accounts, you can, but then when you need it, then you have to have a town meeting and, and pull it out.
Yeah, so, so at the end of this year, we'll have some free cash generated in part by, uh, Tri County, where we budgeted for three students and transportation, but we have none. So that's gonna go into some free cash determination. But that does raise a point that I should have made earlier. The one oops that could get us, bite us in the budget butt, if you will, um, would be Norfolk Aggie, for which I believe I've been prudent, but I've reached out to them again to get their sort of latest of what would they project as number of students. I don't have that response back generally this time of year. Last year, they weren't able to give me much more information than I'm using. So that's one where if we wind up in the fall that they've got two more students there, there might be a special town meeting for that, you know, or we, or, or somewhere along the way, there would be. Not immediately, because we have enough funding in the budget to pay the bills as they come due, but we'd have to supplement it by a fall town meeting. You follow me?
Yep, 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 that happened. Exactly happened. Late August. Oh, by the way, it's gonna be, whatever it was, five instead of three or whatever the number was, but they added two to us. And that's, that was like a hundred grand.
It's very hard to project that across the ball.
Halfway through the first part of the budget.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll just point that out as a challenge.
Um, items not reasonably anticipated forty hours prior to meeting?
I have nothing.
Okay, so our next regular meeting will be the, well, potentially it could be the Finance Committee public hearing on Thursday, if we have a quorum there. Uh, but our next definite meeting will be Monday, May first, for the annual town meeting.
That's today.
Sorry, May eighth. I don't know, I read it, May eighth, May first, May eighth, it says May eighth. May eighth will be the annual town meeting and May fifteenth will be our next regular meeting. Real regular meeting, thank you. All right, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion? All those, well, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Yeah.